Good evening. My name is Peggy Bannas and I'm the Chair of Montclair Community Action Committee, one of the hosts of this evening. On behalf of our members, I want to welcome you here tonight for the 2014 General Municipal Election Montclair City Council Candidates Forum. Before I get into this, if anyone I know, I know everyone has a cellphone. If you please silence them during this event, I appreciate it. The purpose of tonight's event is to help you be more informed about the candidates who are running for the two seats on the Montclair City Council. Before we start this evening, I would like to introduce our Community Action members, Vice Chair Hollis Judkins and Members Liz Alba, Mary Fondario, Lori Milhauser, Arturo Padilla, and Elnie Vanitem. If you have any questions you would like to ask the candidates, please raise your hand and one of our members will be happy to give you a card and also retrieve it for you, from you, excuse me. This forum will be organized and structured and to help us moderate tonight is my pleasure to introduce a member of the Montclair Chamber of Commerce and Immediate Passport Chair, Dan Neal. Dan is a lifelong area resident, alumni of University of Laverne, and respected insurance professional, having had almost 25 years in the insurance industry. He owns and operates the local nationwide insurance agency in Montclair. His special interests include family time, helping the surrounding community, and Notre Dame football. Go Fighting Irish, Dan!
Thanks Peggy, I appreciate that. I'd like to just welcome everybody here and thank you in advance for allowing me to do this. I absolutely love this city and it is a pleasure and a privilege to do this for the city of Montclair. At this time, I would like everyone pleased to stand for the pledge of allegiance. It will be led by a Community Action Committee Member, Arturo Padilla.
Please face the flag of our nation, put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Arturo. I will be discussing my role as the moderator and then outlining the rules for this forum for this evening. I will be moderating three segments of the forum. Candidates will make an opening statement, followed by a question and answer period, and concluding with closing statements. All segments will be timed by our timekeepers, Community Action Committee Chair Peggy Bannas and Community Action Committee Member Arturo Padilla. The forum will be taped and will air on the Government Access Channel, which is Channel Three, various days and times prior to the election. For your convenience, a flyer with the air dates and times will be available at the Campaign Literature Table located on the west wall. The forum can also be accessed on the city's website and the city's Facebook page. All these viewing options will be available after October 22nd. One candidate, Mr. Richard Beltran, is unable to participate with us this evening because of a restraining order that prevents him from coming to city facilities or within 150 feet of designated city employees. The restraining order obtained by city employees against Mr. Beltran is presently in place for two years and a permanent extension is currently being explored. As you can see, all the other candidates are seated on the stage. The seating arrangement for the candidates was determined by a random drawing earlier this evening. For opening statements, the rotation will be from east, and I am on the east side of the building, to west. For closing statements, the rotation will be from west to east. During the question and answer period, the rotation will be from east to west, beginning with one person west and then each new question. Each candidate will have the opportunity to make a three-minute opening statement. The structure and content of any opening statements are at the discretion of the candidate. A typical opening statement may include following candidate's qualifications, why a candidate regards himself as the best leader choice for office, issues important to the candidate, and visionary comments regarding the candidate's outlook for the city of Montclair. The incumbent may wish to highlight their public service to the community and make observations regarding the need to maintain the status quo relative to their retention. Challengers may want to make observations regarding their perceived need to change the established order. Each candidate will be advised when his opening statement is approaching the time limit and when their time is over. Each candidate should make concluding remarks, comments, excuse me, when the one-minute remaining sign is held up and those signs will be directly in front of you. After the completion of all opening statements, candidates will respond to written questions from the audience. Questions may be addressed to the candidates in writing only. So again, if you do have questions, please put your hand up and somebody will bring a comment card to you for the questions. Representatives of the Montclair Community Action Committee will collect your questions. Questions will be reviewed for the purpose of appropriateness and to eliminate duplications. Acceptable questions are those that have to do with the candidate's qualifications, experience, character, integrity, and honesty as they relate to the role and duties of a city council member in Montclair. As the moderator, I will address all questions to the candidates. I will present questions to candidates in the following manner. Number one will be general questions of interest and concern and they will be presented to all candidates. Secondly, general questions will be randomly selected or can be directed toward a specific candidate. And three, questions that have been submitted for a specific candidate may be selected and asked of that candidate. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to those questions. This is the process designed for this forum and there will be no deviation from the format. Following the question and answer period, each candidate will have the opportunity to make a three-minute closing statement. The structure and content of closing statements are at the discretion of each candidate. A typical closing statement may include the following rebuttal comments, reemphasis of previous discussion, and the responsibility to vote. Each candidate will be advised when his closing statement is approaching the one-minute mark. The candidate will then make concluding comments. So with that, we will begin the opening statements, starting on the east side, and each set will be three minutes long. With that, Mr. Lopez, I believe you were first.
Thank you, sir. Fellow Montclair residents here in the building and watching via television at home, I'm Benjamin Lopez, running for city council. I'm a lifetime resident, there's only two of us candidates who can claim that distinction. I have over 20 years involvement in this community, serving and giving back to the very community that gave back to me. This is the city I grew up on, grew up in, rather, back on Caroline Street up against the 10 freeway. This is the city I learned how to play ball in through Montclair Little League, and I remember attending Margarita Elementary School before they unjustly shut it down. And I fought to, fought the closing of that in the 1990s. I even fought for crossing guards in Montclair at the time in the 1990s and the school board listened. At the time, I even volunteered my services to do it for free to help Montclair students get to and from school and home safely. I have deep roots in this city that go back four generations, even before Montclair was a name and a city itself. I'm proud to say that every generation in our family has served in the military and we have one relative in the Middle East right now. Like many of other residents, I'm like you, I'm middle-class. I've had my share of struggles and I still have them today. That's why I understand how important programs are here in the city of Montclair. I know how crucial after-school programs can be, how crucial senior health and meal programs could be, and other programs that many of our residents take advantage of. Programs like Poor La Vida, our medical clinic, Neighborhood Partnership, Meals on Wheels, the list goes on and on. As your council member, those programs will be safe with me, I will not vote to cut them. My involvement in this town goes back when I was 18-years-old. I served as the Secretary of the Montclair Youth Accountability Board and I was appointed at the time in the early, or mid-1990s to our fire commission by Councilwoman Carolyn Raft. You know, every Christmas for the past several years, with the exception of 2012 and 13, when my grandfather was dying, I rang the bell for the Salvation Army. I continue to give up my time and my services to help others in this town for the betterment of families in our town. Like I said, I'm homegrown, born and raised, actually born in Upland but raised here. And for the last 11 years, the voters of this town have been generous to our family. They've elected my father to the Water Board, he's now Vice President of the Board. We have a long level of service within our family, it's something that's Lopez's do. I'd love to have your vote and support come November 4th or via absentee ballot, and of course, we'll touch on the issues throughout the period of the debate, but I'd like your consideration and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Ms. Garcia.
Good evening. Thank you so much to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting us tonight and to the Community Action Committee. My name is Josie Garcia and I am a longtime resident of Montclair. I'm a business owner and a community leader, and I ask your support to make the city better. I am a commercial real estate broker. I have managed the operations of commercial real estate properties for the past 14 years. I have worked with many business owners and building owners throughout the years, and I have successfully built and retained excellent tenant landlord relationships, which has helped keep a low vacancy factor and turnover rate. I believe that my strong interpersonal skills and supervisory experience, result-oriented mindset, and the ability to work independently or in a team setting, and being bilingual in English and Spanish, has helped me lead others effectively. I believe that my business experience and knowledge will be a suitable fit for the people of Montclair. I hold a bachelor's degree in business administration and my concentration is management and human resources. I earned my degree while working full-time and raising my family. My family and I, we moved from Los Angeles to Montclair close to 14-years ago. My daughters attended the Montclair Ontario School District, they also attended the Chief and Joint Union School District. I was very active, I was a volunteer parent, I always volunteered, I was chaperoning kids in school, I was the cool mom, according to them. So I always volunteered and I was also involved with the Montclair Little League, my daughters did play sports, and I met a lot of great people there. And I was also involved, I also showed my leadership skills there, I was a team mom. I was very active and back in the day, the Montclair Little League was, it's not what it is today unfortunately, and my goal is to restore that, to bring that back, because I strongly believe that the youth, every child deserves to play out there. Now, I am the first generation Mexican-American, I'm the first one in my family to go to college. I am a leader, I believe in my city, I believe that we have a lot to offer, I am here because I invested, my business is here, my family was raised here, Montclair gave me the all-American dream, and my vision for the city is that we all work together so that we can build a stronger local economy and community. I believe that if we focus on the core values of education, business development, public safety, and community involvement, we can build a better Montclair. If we invest on these things, we are sure to get paid dividends because there's no greater return on investment than the things that sustain our community. Oh, the cookie boy? Perfect. As my volunteer work, I'm actually, I'm a business leader for Promise Scholars, so I do participate, I love speaking to the sixth grader, I believe in education, I believe that education is something that cannot be taken away from you, I believe that you break through the glass ceiling and it opens up greater opportunities. And to represent the demographics of Montclair, the education level is not high, I am here to serve the community, to be able to use my abilities to speak English and Spanish fluently, to be able to-
I'm afraid I'll have to cut you off, we've been past three minutes on that. Okay. Mr. Rue.
Good evening. Thank you to the Community Action Commission, as well as the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this tonight, and all of our city for making this room available. I am Bill Rue, I'm running for reelection to the Montclair City Council to continue the progress that we have made. Progress which has brought us a youth center, a senior center, and a revitalized community center. Progress which has brought us a farmer's market and one of the first fruit parks in California. Progress which ensures a college education for our youth with our award-winning online to college program. Progress which has reduced crime rates in our community and restored police motorcycle patrols. Progress which by sharing fire with Upland has made Montclair a model for many other cities. I will continue our prudent and solid financial management, for even in difficult times, we have balanced the budget, cut spending, put money in reserves, and not raised taxes. I will also continue our award-winning community collaborative and Poor La Vida programs, which empower our residents to a better life. These successes are simply a prologue to our future, a future which will see the gold line completed to Montclair and enable our residents to expand their opportunities. A future with new housing near the Montclair Transit Center, a future which will see a revitalized and expanded Montclair Plaza, a future bright with improvements to our streetscape, sidewalks, landscaping, and facade improvements. Now, I've walked all corners of this community and I've heard about the need for jobs. I will continue to work with labor and business, the public sector, as well as the private sector, to find ways to bring jobs which pay well, provide families with the opportunity to earn a decent living, and provide disposable income. Jobs which will allow our families not just to dream about a better future, but make that future a reality. In short, I pledge prudent financial decisions and effective planning to reduce costs, continue our open and transparent communication with outreach to all groups and neighborhoods, not just special interests, seeking new sources of city revenue, job opportunities for our families with youth, senior, and community programs for all of our residents, not just a few, police and fire services which keep our community and families safe. These are the principles which have always guided me in my commitment to this city and that will continue to do so in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Brunsky.
I want to thank the citizens of Montclair who are attending in person tonight and those via television. You obviously have an interest in your city and I applaud that. For those of you who don't know me, I'll give you a quick bio. I'm a graduate of Cal State San Bernardino with a bachelor's in economics, and I also have a Juris Doctor degree from California Southern Law School. I have used my degrees to successfully run a real estate business locally, acquire and sell real estate, and run several successful businesses. My entire business life is based on results. If I don't perform, I don't get paid. I'm commission-based. If I don't close escrow on your house, I don't get paid. I don't get paid hourly, I don't get paid weekly, I don't get paid monthly. Sometimes months go by without a paycheck. So I have to be prudent with my money and watch, you know, where my spending habits go. I'm married with two boys and enjoy golf and sports in my spare time. I'm sure you've seen my real estate signs around town or you've received my brochures about Montclair Real Estate, and the good news is, Montclair Real Estate prices have gone through the roof the last two years. So we're in a good spot, you know, equity-wise in the city, and it's a good sign. But if you really want to know who I am, please Google this, Sean Brunsky Economics Scholarship. And that'll show you that I'm really a giver, because when I was at Cal State San Bernardino, I was lucky enough to get some scholarships to help me get through school. And as I graduated and became successful, I gave back to my economics department. And now over 30 students have received my scholarship to help out with, you know, books and fees at Cal State San Bernardino. And I've funded it enough that it's going to be there in perpetuity. So when we're gone and my kids are gone and my grandkids are gone, that economics scholarship will still be there for some student that's struggling and needs some help. Another example of my trustworthiness, Montclair resident John Hubner. Everybody should know John, he was Mr. Montclair Real Estate, sent you brochures, taught you all the time. Well, when John came to retire, who did he come to? He came to me to give, to give me over hundreds of his clients to take over for all their real estate needs, and I've been lucky enough to help them out. I'm also a youth basketball coach for the city of Montclair, right over here at the youth center. I coach your sons, daughters, grandchildren in the winter league and in the summer league. Matter of fact, I once had a player named Pete, whose mom told my wife that I was one of his best coaches ever. Pete is actually Paul Eaton's grandson. So I'm not going to take a salary for this job, I'm not going to take any benefits, I want to give back to the city of Montclair. And in doing so, hopefully you'll trust me to watch your tax dollars be spent appropriately and wisely.
Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, and if I may stand, proper respects to the audience for being here today. I don't want to stand here and give you a bunch of gobbledygook, I just wanted to say thank you all for being here. Thank you to the CAC, to the Chamber of Commerce, and the city of Montclair for providing this forum for us tonight. I'm not going to make a bunch of promises. I am going to promise that I will be a good leader. First, I'll put God, I'll lead by example, I'll never compromise my integrity, I will respect differences, I'll remain open-minded. I will make a difference, I'll be present and available, I will continue my volunteerism, I will learn from my mistakes, and I will play well with others. I came here 23-years ago. As a teen mother, I had the, she was one at the time, young lady that's in the audience today, she's 24 now, and I sought out stability. And they say, be careful what you ask for, because that's exactly what I got here in Montclair. I came to Human Services looking for that stability. Marcia Richter, Sue Yocum, at the time, still in, still in effect, there still are leaders today, they, they directed me, gave me hope, and I pursued. I pursued their, their best judgment or best advice, and here I am today, asking that you consider one thing. When you vote, please think, who has been there, who has heeded the advice of the other leaders, and who's going to make a difference? I have been active in the city for 24-years, nine years, about nine-years with the Montclair Junior Women's Club. I was also involved with the District Women's Club Federation. I have been active in Our Lady of Lords for the last three-years, the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce. I've been active in the Measure F, which was put on the ballot to help build the Police Department, and the old one would get shut down, build a youth center. I've been very active, I've been here, I've been present, and I am available, and I will continue, win or lose. I ask that you consider my leadership qualities and, and know that I will be here for you, win or lose. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will start our general question session, and again, it'll be from east to west. So, Mr. Lopez, the, this question will go to, to all of you. And this is from the audience this evening. "At every local election, we hear each position, politician, excuse me, running for office seems to know what his or, what is best for our city. Can you please tell us, and be honest, starting in January of this year, of next year, how involved have you been, or how involved have you been with the city of Montclair and how will you be involved in the city of Montclair? Have you been only involved in the city of Montclair? Please specify how you will be involved."
Now, my involvement in town obviously spans over the course of 20-years, but most recently, based on the question from January of this year to present day, my involvement has been regional, so it hasn't necessarily benefited solely Montclair. Have I solely been involved in the city of Montclair? No. I've been involved in programs that help teenage women that face crisis pregnancies, and of course, that happens in every city. So we provide ministerial work to them, provide them resources. I've helped folks that are dealing with homeless needs, needs, issues, with, through the Salvation Army in my volunteer time with them. Doesn't just solely benefit Montclair, it benefits the region. There's, there's a whole list of gamut of things that I have done in Montclair for the benefit of others, or in the region for the benefit of others as well. Back in the day, though, I was involved here in Montclair through virtue of a series of committees, commissions, and whatnot. So, one thing that can be said about me, when most 18-year-olds at the time were out partying and playing video games, I was here involved in the city, at City Hall getting involved. So, take it for what it's worth, folks, I mean, I have, you know, deep roots and a proven track record as far as involvement and commitment that I've given to this city, and nothing's going to change if elected or if not elected.
Thank you. And Ms. Garcia.
Okay. Well, I, I'm involved with-
Excuse me, one second.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, sorry.
Had to reset, right?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Well, I have been involved with Montclair, first of all, as a resident. I've been living on Montclair for close to 14-years, and I'm also a business owner, so I pay taxes on both ends. My involvement was, like I indicated earlier, I was very involved with the Ontario Montclair School District, all my kids were grown, now they're in college, so I don't have that opportunity, and now I'm seeing the needs to work with the parents so that there can be more involvement through them. I am a, a, a business leader, so I do speak to the children, the sixth graders, I'm very, very, very keen on education. I believe that we have to invest in education, it's something that pays dividends, you know, we have to invest in our future, our future workforce, not only with our children, but also with the parents. Part of the issues that we have right now with the parents is that they're working, this represent the demographics here, two to three jobs to make ends meet, and my goal, starting in January, as the question indicated, is to be very active. I'm going to step down from my job, from my position, and commit myself to be an active representative of the community, to be involved with the education sector, with the business sector. I am involved with the Chamber of Commerce, not as I wish I could, because I am a very, I, I am really busy, we have a successful business that I'm running, but my plans are to work with community leaders, to be able to, I work with the Crisis Women, Women and Children's Crisis Shelter Center, my goal would be to have one of those here in Montclair, and to be able to work on sponsorships for the children, so that no one goes left, no one's left behind, so that every child that wants to participate in sports does not get limited because they don't have the resources. And that's where my community involvement will come to play, where I will work with the business sector and get sponsorships and mentoring opportunities, and I believe that by doing that, we will definitely make it a better Montclair.
Thank you. Mr. Rue.
Thank you. My community involvement goes back my entire life. I learned it from my mother. She was one of the PTA Moms at El Camino Elementary School, along with Ginger Eaton, going back to the days I was in kindergarten. And I, I came up in a world that you give back. We didn't have a lot growing up, but we always volunteered. Here in the city, I'm volunteering, every time I, I turn around, I'm doing something. The Easter Day, Family Fun Day in the Park, the Christmas Tree Lighting, Memorial Day, the Halloween Event. I'm not just there, I'm cleaning up afterwards, I'm helping the families. Regionally, I sit on the Community Action Partnership Board of San Bernardino County. It is an organization that helps low-income families by empowering them through a series of different programs, including the IDA Program, which matches a dollar for every $2 saved, so that they can buy a home or start a business. I've also been very active with Foothill Family Shelter, serving our community, where we also have transitional housing here in the city. I'm proud of my volunteer activity, I'm proud of the fact that through my life, I've probably given back more to this city than I've ever taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brunsky.
Yeah, I'm going to continue to coach youth sports, signed up, I'm going to be a coach this winter at Winter League Ball. My oldest son Nicholas, this will be his last year, playing Winter League Ball, but in the summer, I'll be back to coach him and his younger brother. Coaching youth sports, what does that involve? That's calling 10 parents and emailing them and trying to round up 10 kids to show up for practice every Tuesday and then show up for the games every Wednesday and, and, you know, be, be a leader for those children and be an example for those children. Because if they're not out playing youth sports, they're sitting at home, playing Xbox and getting into trouble. And just so you know, at my house, the Xbox is not turned on Monday through Friday. My children only get to play, and it's timed by my wife, only a couple-hours on the weekend, because I believe that my kids should be doing their homework during the week, playing sports, and, and not sitting on an Xbox, watching their life drift away. How am I going to be involved if I was elected the city councilperson? Things are going to change in a very positive way, because I'm going to be involved in getting the Montclair Mall and the whole area around it developed finally. I've watched the city council talk and talk and talk about it for years and years and years. I've talked about the vacant lot across Costco that's still a dirt lot for many years. That's all going to change. This, this city is going to get developed, okay? Because if we don't get it developed, there's this thing called the internet, and, you know, and amazon.com, and if we don't get people to this Plaza and that sales tax goes away, this city's in for a rude awakening. So I'm going to make those big changes, and with those good changes, guess what? We're going to have more, more funds to apply to these other programs. So it's going to be a very exciting time when I'm elected your city councilperson. So, it's gonna be a very exciting time when I'm elected your city councilperson.
Thank you.
Do you repeat the question from January to present?
Yep. At, at every local election, we hear each politi- politician running for office seems to know what is best for our city. Can you please tell us and be honest, starting in January of this year, or two thousand and fourteen, uh, of this year, have you been only with, have you, how involved have you been only with the city of Montclair? And how involved do you plan to be in the city of Montclair?
Thank you. From January, I've continued my involvement with the Montclair Ontario Junior Women's Club. This will be my ninth, going on my ninth year. Three years I was the president. Our Lady of Lords School, the liaison to the Montclair Chamber of Commerce. This is going on my third year. I'm the Public Relations Coordinator and the Fundraising Committee Member for the, the parish at Our Lady of Lords. I have volunteered for eight years, going on my ninth year, with the Montclair Senior Center Nutrition Program. And I love my seniors. Can I throw that in? I, uh, I've been very active at my daughter's school as homeroom mom. I've been also the assistant mother to my daughter's basketball team, at the, the team mom, I guess you'd call it, on, at Our Lady of Lords. I've been very active in anything going on at the city. I show up at almost every event. I would say every event that the public is invited to. I've attended the five-year strategic planning meeting, which I've learned so much about our city and the plans we have for our mall, and I attended the, the budget meeting, so I know what's going on financially. I, I've attended almost every event, and when they need an extra hand, I step in. I will have to call, oftentimes, my husband and say, uh, tag team, come get the baby, I have to go to work. I'm very involved, and I will continue to stay involved.
Thank you. Back over to this end of the table. If elected, you will have only one vote on issues you wish to pursue. How would you convince other council members to advance your issues and turn them into actions?
I believe we're doing a rotation, are we not?
No, we come back to this way.
Oh, to the east, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, back to the east side, and then it goes back the other direction.
Well, first of all, you've got to understand, as a council member, you're, you're only one voice on a five-member body. And you're elected by the same people. So, one person does not have a, an agenda per se that supersedes the other four. So, I would be respective of the other four's personalities, their issues of concern, their agendas they wish to bring to the table. Now granted, we're guaranteed at least one member of the council that would be new. The others could possibly stay, or we can, may have two faces. So, I would yield to the other three with respect to institutional memory, some of the intricacies of, did I say that word right even? The back end of some of the deals and some of the workings of City Hall, negotiations, budgeting, that I may have missed as a resident and not privy to as a council member. I would heed their advice. But I'm here to serve as a team player. I'm not here to shoot a hole in my own canoe to prove a point. Those days are gone in Montclair politics. I'm here to serve with the other four members for the betterment of Montclair, and that's the only agenda that I have. Now granted, I'll take every issue, issue by issue. And I may side with some members and I may, but it all depends on the issue. I gotta look at the issue and look at the merits of every issue, look at the pros and cons. And as a member of the council, an elected member of the council, it'd be incumbent upon me to be prudent and come with the best decision that I think would advance Montclair's objectives and goals without it being a detriment to the residents. And that's the commitment I give to you as your next councilman for the city of Montclair.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia?
Well, the one vote, um, it, it, it's definitely a powerful vote. I am here to represent the people of Montclair. So, I am here to be their voice. I'm here to be the conduit between the city council and the, and the rest of the constituents, including business owners. Obviously, I, I'm going to, um, all, all my votes are gonna be for the betterment of the community, of the people. And how would I convince them? I will definitely present my, my points and views, and, and it's definitely gonna be something, let's face it, we're all here, we're looking at economics, and something that's gonna be beneficial, beneficial to the community, um, and the city economically, socially. So, I would, um, address the issues to the council as, um, as, as the people address the issues. Because that's, I believe, the problem right now, that people's voices are not being heard. And I, they're not, they're not for the most part. And I wanna be that conduit, and I would like to present it to the rest of the council members, to let them know, these are the grievances, this is why I'm voting for this. And I would obviously give them all the explanations, and, and, and that's how I would do it. And I would definitely be, um, sometimes we may not agree on certain matters, but we are respectful enough to agree to disagree and to be cordial. And again, I'm with, um, with Ben on this. It can't be like that no more. We have to be, we have to work together. We have to hear the people's voices, and, and all, at all sectors, from the public safety, from the education, from the business, from the residents as a whole. And that's, that's how I would work with, um, the city council members.
Thank you. Mr. Rue?
Yes, I would continue to do what I've always done, work as a team with my colleagues, find ways to advance the cause that I believe in, take it to them. An example, we can go back several years ago, when students came forward and talked about a skate park they wanted in our community. It was very important to them, it was important to the parents. They talked to me, I started to talk to my other colleagues. We asked the parents and the students to come forward, tell us what the issue is, how can we make this better for you? Well, a few years later, we had a skate park, because we listened. We understood what the public wanted, what our students wanted. I work with my colleagues, I continue to work with them. I don't always get my way, but neither do they. But the one thing that we can look back on is the fact that as a city, we've been stable. We've all been able to look at the good things we've done, because my vote counts as much as Councilmember Raft, or Councilmember Dutre, or Mayor Eaton, or, or Councilman Paulitz. And we've pushed forward with that. The other thing I've learned is from history. The same thing that John Kennedy and Everett Dirksen learned, the same thing that Ronald Reagan and Tip O'Neill learned, the same thing that Hubert Humphrey and Barry Goldwater learned. You come together in reason, you focus on your strengths, you focus on what you can accomplish together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brunsky?
Yeah, it's only one vote, but that vote carries a lot of weight, especially if there's a three-to-two decision on a matter affecting your lives and your pocketbooks, and as a city of Montclair residents. I have to get along with others. That's the nature of my business. I'm not just a self-employed person, I'm a real estate agent. I have to deal with another agent on the other side that's fighting for his client. I have to deal with escrow companies. I have to deal with title companies, lenders, appraisers, home inspectors, termite companies. And guess what? Sometimes deals go sideways. So, what do you think I do? Do you think I throw a pity party and say, well, if I don't get my way, then we're not gonna close this deal? Well, guess what? If the deal isn't closed, I don't get paid. So, sometimes I have to reduce my real estate commission. Sometimes I have to go paint, uh, a garage door that has chip paint on it to get FHA approval. I do what it takes to get done in my real estate business. So, I'm just letting you know, as a city council representative, I'm gonna work with my other council members, but I'm gonna make sure that you, the citizens, are getting represented appropriately.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you. Respect. Work with your council members. By gaining their respect, I think, um, what's really important is that Monc- we, I recognize Montclair as, as having probably the most effective council, no, it is the most effective council in all twenty-four cities. That's why we have the most financially secure, stable city. We need to, uh, understand that that one voice may not always be heard, and that's fine. And you try a different strategy next time. But with logical analysis, analytical reasoning, and a lot of respect, I think you'll work well with others.
Thank you. We're gonna come back down to this end of the table, Mr. Lopez. Alrighty. How important do you think renovation of the Montclair Plaza is to the future of the city of Montclair? Why? How do you see the city's participation in the renovation of the Montclair Plaza?
If I'm not mistaken, I think the Plaza has changed owners within the past couple of years, I believe. First of all, one thing that I do not want to see happen is us go the way of Pomona, where they were dependent upon their mall for their income, and now look at them today, unfortunately. I pledge for that not to happen here in the city of Montclair. I'd like to see every shop that we have in Montclair, the Plaza rather, occupied with a business that'll thrive. Now, that takes some working with city staff to negotiate those types of deals, help foster an environment where businesses can come in. The mall is one conduit, one peg of the table, that helps keep this community afloat, and it's very crucial. So, we should do everything within our power to make sure that the Plaza is sustained and supported fully. So far, I gotta say, I gotta give credit to the council for some of their actions regarding the mall and support those efforts. Perhaps in some areas, I would have done things a little differently. But overall, I've been pleased. Now, should we be satisfied with the progress we've made now? Absolutely not. I think we need to be innovative, creative, work with business owners, try to make that the prime shopping space in the area, and gets, let's give Ontario Mills and Victoria Gardens a run for their money as best as possible. We're like the little engine that could, you know, with the mi- we're small in numbers with our city, but we're powerful in, in, in power. And I'd like to see our mall thrive. Now, I also support the downtown specific plan, and bringing the gold rail into Montclair. As with the train coming into where Metro Link is, and having those San Gabriel Valley residents dump their money and their spending here in Montclair only helps vitalize our local economy, lessens the burden on our tax revenue for residents, and also it provides an opportunity for more businesses and jobs. I fully support it.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia?
The, uh, the Plaza is extremely important to me. I believe, um, the Plaza is our bread and butter, let's face it. And right now, we've had a lot of issues. I faced a lot of issues. I tried to bring many businesses to the Plaza be- back, before it was acquired through, uh, by CIM Group. They, um, it was a monopoly, we could not do anything. I know the city tried, and the city has done a great job with the, with the implementation plan. And I, it is extremely important, because that's what's gonna thrive our local economy. That's how we're gonna attract local businesses, that's how we're gonna attract more residents. And I believe in the plan, and I always, I always advocated it. I have seen it since the project there, the Paseos. I've always told people, it's happening, it's happening, it's happening. They don't, they didn't believe me, but now they're seeing it. Now I have investors that want to invest in Montclair, and I'm telling them, do it now, before the metro gold line gets here, because that's gonna definitely, um, give us the, um, the, the tax base, raise the tax base, so that we can hire back those, uh, the lost, the lost jobs, the firefighters, the police department. We've lost a lot of jobs. And, and it's not because the city has not done anything about it, it's just that we lost the redevelopment, um, and, um, and, and, and it's affecting us. And now, let's go back to our bread and butter. Let's, let's work together, let's work with business owners, let's attract new business, let's, um, work with them, let's offer something that no other city's gonna offer. The Plaza's gonna be the best. I believe it's gonna be, um, definitely our, the answer to our prayers, and it's extremely important. I'm a hundred percent committed to it, and, um, and I know that you guys are too. And, um, I, I, I know that that's gonna totally do it for us. I, I vis- I visualize it, I see it, I believe it, and I'm gonna work hard to make sure that we, that we, that we get that going. I'm gonna work, uh, with our, uh, our state senators, our assembly members, I'm gonna talk to them, I'm gonna meet with them, and I'm gonna have them do the work at a, at a state level, because it does affect us at a local level.
Thank you. Mr. Rue?
Yes, thank you. The Montclair Plaza is important not just to the city of Montclair, it's a regional Plaza, a regional entity. It employs people not just from the city of Montclair, but from throughout the region. And the economic effects of that mall ripple throughout the region. I fully support and have been part of the team that's working to revitalize this mall. It's not just a plan, it's not just some thing put on a shelf somewhere, it's a real idea. It's a real thing that's going to happen. What I see happening at the Montclair Plaza is going to be something very similar to the Americana at Brand or The Grove. We will have shops, we will have restaurants, you'll have outdoor space, living space, to just sit and recreate. You're going to have housing tied into that. Housing is important, because as the gold line comes through, and it will come to Montclair, that is my commitment tonight. That is important, to get those economics in place with that mall. Without the gold line, there's no regional development. Without the mall, we're not going to be able to get the people from the gold line shopping, housing. That's how critical it is. And we, as a city, we're gonna have to work on permitting, speed up what we need to speed up in the, uh, Planning Department, work to make sure that we're not waiting on something that can be done in a more effective way. We're very efficient, we'll continue to be efficient, and as I, as we move forward with the mall, I think you're going to like what you see. And I know that our city staff and our current council is up to the challenge of making sure that we get that mall on track as fast as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brunsky?
Okay, gotta go fast here. Nordstrom Rack, Toys R Us, Babies R Us, Golf Smith, TJ Maxx, Tilly's, Chili's, Panera Bread, Famous Footwear, Pickup Sticks, Pyology Pizza, Bevmo, G Stage, Utility Board Shop, Chipotle, The Habit Hamburgers, Nectar Juice, and a brand-new Charles Schwab. Those are all brand-new stores. You know where they're at? At the Colonies in Upland. And what are we doing here in Montclair? We got more fitness centers in the city of Montclair. Uh, on my doorstep, I, I mean, I could be broke if I joined every, uh, um, gym in the city of Montclair now. That is not gonna generate tax dollars, having all these gyms. We need something to bring in sales tax revenue. And that's for me and Joe CC eye-to-eye. We're gonna bring these businesses to the city of Montclair. Things have gotta happen. Do you know that FedEx and UPS are hiring like seventy-five thousand extra people, uh, this Christmas, because of the internet boom? People are just, people are not going to the malls anymore. They buy it online, they get it delivered to their front door, why should they go? So, you know what we're gonna do? We're gonna have a brand-new car giveaway every month at the Montclair Plaza. You go and shop at Montclair, we're, you're gonna put your name in the hat? We're gonna have a brand-new car giveaway. Do you think people are gonna start coming to shop in Montclair? You better believe they will be. They're gonna get a chance at a brand-new car, okay? Panera Bread was supposed to be right below, um, at the corner of Mona Vista, right below the Olive Garden. But this city council and the, and the, and the Montclair Plaza couldn't put it together. So, where are they at? They're up, they're up at the Colonies. Restaurants, Macaroni Grill, that's, that's one under. Islands, that one under, okay? Things are not happening. This city council needs to change, so we can get these businesses to come to Montclair and not shut down, okay? And I wanna know from Bill, and maybe Tricia knows, is the gold line deal in writing? Do we have it in writing?
Thank you. Ms. Martinez?
Good news. The city manager, council, I know, they're working diligently with CIM. I, I know that. I've been involved enough to know that it's not something being overlooked. The city is definitely building bridges to a Montclair future. And it's beautiful, it's a bright future, and it does entail some of those things that Brunsky pointed out. The, uh, the, uh, I forgot the name of the mall down there. Yeah. I don't wanna repeat it. Keep shopping, Montclair, show you care. It's very important that Montclair Plaza is renovated. I support it fully, a hundred percent, and, and I am, am excited to see what's, what's to come with the, um, the Transit Center, Transit, uh, Bridge that we're building.
Does that conclude your comments?
That does.
Thank you. Alrighty, back down to the east side of the table again. Mr. Lopez? Given the loss of redevelopment, and the fact that generally, a city may not supply the private sector with monetary assistance, how should the city work on economic development of the future?
One thing I gotta say, just on October sixth, the council, to their credit, invested, gave preliminary approval, or actually the final stamp of approval, on, um, forty-seven million-dollar bonds that will be invested into Montclair to help with projects like paving streets, installing lights, installing sidewalks and whatnot. That was, if I'm not mistaken, some of that, I believe, if not all, was redevelopment money that was left over from the abolition of redevelopment agencies that the state put upon the cities. The RDA money that we have, I am very much in favor of investing it into infrastructure projects, programs here in the city, so we can prolong them and utilize those monies for the benefit of the public. I've also said, though, if there- I've also said though, if there's a way, that perhaps any leftover funds that we have, maybe we should put them into reserves and keep those reserves up for a rainy day fund. Or perhaps, I know we can't maybe directly give to residents, find a way to give them an aggregated refund amount per parcel, per home that they can invest and put into their property which will help beautify homes in Montclair and help the real estate market. Those are just ideas that I have, but I'm all in favor of the investment, investing those monies that we currently have into the city like the city council has done, although I would be precautionary in instituting an additional 40, 50 million bond indebtedness in the future until we had paid these resources off first and after the length of those projects are done instead of continually running up the public's credit card, if you will.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia.
Well, for me, the economic development, again, I am well aware that we don't have the funds to invest in it, but my vision, my goal is to work on getting the money and the way I would think that would be the best way for, to support our businesses, I, there's a lot of grievances about signage. There's a lot of grievances about code enforcement. Businesses don't feel appreciated and I don't know, again, if, I'm not saying that that's the case, I'm just quoting what I've been hearing. A lot, it's been the same issues for all the business owners. It's been the signs, it's been code enforcement, it's just been not too business-friendly. So, my plan for that would be, let's work with our business owners. Let's work with them as far as the code enforcement goes, as far as the signage goes. Let's, they're willing to pay, they're willing to pay to have these signs, they're willing to, the city will make money off of it and then they will be able to sell more. If they sell more, they'll be able to pay more taxes and they'll be satisfied and then guess what they'll do? They'll contribute to our kids because I, I'm challenging them, I'm telling the business owners, "You are doing business in our city and it's your humble duty to give back to your community." And they're willing to do it, they're willing to sponsor, they're willing to sponsor the children. There's a lot of, again, the demographics, the families don't have money to put all their kids in T-ball. If they have a family of three and they could only afford to pay for one child, no one's going to play ball and those are the demographics. I understand the Latino community, that's the way I was raised. If my mom could not buy a pair of shoes for both of us, my sister and I, no one's getting a pair of shoes and that's where I believe that the economic development, if we all work together, the morale will go up and the money will go up.
Thank you. Mr. Rue.
The loss of redevelopment agencies hurt many cities, including Montclair, but it doesn't mean we're not proactive on economic development. Indeed, we are. We didn't need any redevelopment agency to attract Magic Johnson and the Canyon Johnson partnership with the Paseos at Montclair, the new housing development. We need to work with our business community as we've been doing. We can create incentives by speeding up the timeline for businesses that need to get things done here in the city. We can use the $47 million bond to help do those necessary improvements to make the area more attractive to business. For small businesses, there's a program and I sit on the board for it, the Inland Empire Small Business Financial Development Center. We make micro loans to businesses who are looking to expand, change their operation or fix their facades. Now, the business owner and the tenant, or the building owner and the tenant have to agree to that, you can't have it one-sided. So, we have those opportunities before us. We can also incentivize businesses by doing out any number of benefits to them that will help them to stay and come into this city. When we look at the Paseos and what we did up there, the incentive was the fact that they knew this was a staple council and the fact that we didn't put a lot of strings on them. Go ahead and do what you need to do. We trust that you're gonna do the right thing. The plans look good and we went forward with them and guess what? We have a beautiful development. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brunsky.
Yeah, there's a company called Cosmont Companies, a gentleman named Larry Cosmont and I tried to bring this after last election to some, you know, city officials at the, at City Hall and try to set up meetings with Larry because Larry puts private sector people together with the public entities to help turn things around and obviously, that never happened. Larry was very successful up in the high desert. There was some hospitals and there was some malls that were going under and he put some public-private relationships together and saved those entities. And those are the things that just haven't happened here in Montclair. I live here, I sell houses here, I drive up and down the streets and it just isn't happening. You know, as for the Montclair Plaza, that needs to be a destination. So, for instance, I'm just thinking out loud, if there was some movie theaters at the Montclair Plaza, I would probably go up there and spend my money, except now I have to go elsewhere to go see a movie. And if I'm going to the mall, guess what I'm doing? Before the movie starts, I'm wandering around the mall, I'm buying things, I'm buying items, I'm eating probably before the movies. Or, better yet, if there was an ice cream parlor and some stuff like that, after the movies, I'd spend more money at the Montclair Plaza or the surrounding areas, okay? It's kinda simple, the way I see it, but I just don't see anything happening in a positive way, but it's going to happen. If I'm elected, I guarantee you, positive things are going to happen at that Montclair Plaza. And once again, I'm gonna ask again, I have a councilman to my right and I have someone who's been, you know, sponsored by all the other councilmen, is the gold line deal in writing that it's coming to Montclair? Thank you.
Ms. Martinez.
Economic development is going to take a very strong support of our five-year strategic plan and I can do that. I support the north downtown Montclair-specific plan, the Montevista grade separation, the development of our, of our community, beautifying our city, it's attracting residents, it's attracting local businesses and I think that's the answer, supporting what is in, what is in effect right now and going forward with that, supporting it. I do that and, you know, that's, I think that's gonna be the answer to our economic development. Also, since I have a minute, I started, it's just a little thing, but if we all do those little things, it makes a big difference. I started this little program at Our Lady of Lourdes since we have 160 students. I go around, I tell the local businesses, "You don't have to even be a member of the chamber. Give me 160 flyers." This is also to all of you out there. You have a business? Give me 160 flyers. Every Wednesday, our kids go home with their weekly newsletter, they get distributed. Any flyer you have, you wanna free advertise? Give it to me. I'll give, I'll give one to every student every Wednesday and I encourage others to do the same.
Thank you. All righty. And that was four questions in a row that we've been doing and we'll start rotating so you're not always the first guy on the hill. So, this one's gonna go first to Ms. Garcia. And would you support a future sales tax increase if they were necessary to the financial stability of Montclair?
No, I will not support it. And the reason why I will not support it is, I'm not in favor for that. I believe that we can work, we can definitely do other things to bring the income that we need without having to raise the sales tax. And again, and again, I go back to working together, I cannot emphasize it enough. I cannot emphasize it enough because even when we work with the, with sports, if we fill, if the kids are playing in those fields again, then after the games, they go, they go and purchase, they go to the, they go to the pizza places, they're consuming, they're consuming a lot. So, I will not support the tax increase at all. I will work on, I will try to find other ways of creating the revenue where we don't have to do that. So, I will not support it, not one bit.
Thank you. Mr. Rue. Jumped the gun.
Okay. No, I wouldn't support a sales tax increase. We don't need one at this time, we don't need one in the future. What we'll be doing at the Montclair Plaza will bring in a tremendous amount of revenue. We need to work with the developer and to continue to let those plans move forward because as I've said earlier, I think the vision will be something similar to the Grove or the Americana at Brand with a lot of movie theaters, beautiful stores, beautiful restaurants, housing, so we're not gonna need a sales tax increase at all. The revenue and taxes we receive from that alone will help carry us forward. And I'll take a moment to answer the question on the gold line. The gold line is coming to Montclair. State Senator Norma Torres enacted legislation a year and a half ago that codified the terminus as the transit center in the city of Montclair and that was legislation signed by the governor. So, we know that the gold line will be coming here. We've got planning to do with the county, but it will be happening. And again, that'll be part of the reason we don't need a sales tax increase because we're going to be getting people into this city, shopping and spending their money here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brunsky.
How about a sales tax decrease? Nobody ever wants to talk about that, do they? Because that's how politicians and how, that's how these cities run. If they don't spend all of your money, then they can't spend it the following year. That's how the game is played, okay? But if you take a look what happened in 2010 in the national elections when you had a whole bunch of Republican governors take over these states and they lowered their taxes and they had all these $5 billion deficits all over, guess what happened now? They all have increases. Take a look at Wisconsin, Ohio, Florida, Texas, Louisiana, South Carolina. They actually decreased taxes, provided incentives, businesses came in and it generated more revenue. So, the sales tax decrease invited people to come in, there was more revenue generated than what was currently being brought in. It's simple things like that. Once again, I asked about it, is the gold line deal in writing? And the reason why I'm concerned about it is the city of Montclair has already committed $3 million for that extension. And I'd like to know, we spent $3 million in plans or environmental reports and stuff like that, just like our boondoggle rapid train going up to San Francisco. Let's see a show of hands, who's gonna spend $200 or $300 to take a train ride at a 200 or 300 miles an hour up to San Francisco? On a weekly basis though, because this thing is so expensive, it's unbelievable. I'd rather fly southwest out of Ontario and I'm being Frisco in like 50 minutes for half the price, okay? That's the reality of that. And so, I'm really concerned that our city's spending $3 million, is this deal linked? How come, how come I don't read about it in the newspaper? How come I don't see that, you know, the gold line sign there? It's very concerning me that the city's spending this money on the hopes that it comes in and I do hope it does.
I would love to get everyone's vote and just make that, you know, such an easy answer. Well, of course, I don't support an increase in sales tax, but that wasn't the question. If it was essential to Montclair, sometimes you gotta do what you gotta do when it's best for your city. Unpopular decisions sometimes have to be made. I don't like it, I'm a taxpayer. I don't support it, but I can't say no because you just don't know. You don't know what the times present and if it was essential to Montclair, I love Montclair, it might be necessary.
Thank you. Mr. Rue, you're gonna be the number one on this one? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. I forgot, I got, I got so used to you being number one. Go right ahead.
Let me know, let me know when.
You're good.
Folks, look, we're struggling, a lot of our residents are struggling financially. The economy is on a rebound, but there's still a long way to go. Families are struggling. I'm happy to get the support of the Taxpayer Protection Committee, the only candidate to be endorsed by, for this race by them. Look it, folks, we pay a sales tax, we pay property taxes and on top of those property taxes, you pay a bond tax for the Ontario Montclair School District, Chaffey College District, Chaffey High School, you pay income tax, sales tax, payroll tax, gas tax, 60 to 70 cents more on gas in this state than any of the others. You pay the car tax, a tax on plastic bags until they're banned, then you pay the utility tax. At the time, I was the only person on this, in this race at the time, not to, with the exception of perhaps Bill Rue and I, we were active at the time, the other three were not active perhaps in that, to my recollection. I fought the utility tax at the time with Carol and Rath back in the 90s and 2000s and I felt it was unjust and I also am opposed to the city of Montclair taxing water when the Montevista Water District is the one that provides that resource. I believe in a tax reduction when we can economically do it because I know the citizens have since imposed the utility tax, so let's work on reducing it. I give you a pledge, unlike the last candidate, to never vote for a tax increase so long as I'm a council member in the city of Montclair. We'll cut first, but we won't tax.
Thank you. Technical difficulty. All right, Mr. Rue, this, you'll be the first one on this question. What should be done to improve code enforcement and business development within our city?
What should be done to improve code enforcement and business development within our city? As far as business development, I think we're doing a good job. Obviously, we're getting new owners at the mall. We have new housing coming in, but we can always improve that. We can do things internally in planning to help speed up the process. We could do some one-stop permitting where it's necessary and where it may be needed. As far as code enforcement, we can look at this and find a way, and I think they're doing a good job, but we can find a way to make sure that it's done fairly and equitably as they've been doing. We can find ways to work with them as a community to make their job a little bit easier, find areas that maybe, working with the business and the residents, it's not necessary. There are changes that we can make with that and we've done that over the years. Code enforcement and business development evolves with the city and evolves with the community. It's not static. What we did 30 years ago is not what we're doing today and we'll be able to turn around and in 30 years from now, look at how we did something now and say, "We're not doing it that way." So, we won't be static with that. We can take our code enforcement and find ways to perhaps change it from enforcement to compliance. Just a simple switch of a word can make a big difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brunsky.
I'm not sure if Mr. Rue's talking on the same business people that I'm talking to, but everybody feels completely humiliated with the city of Montclair. Bottom line, that's how, that's how it is out in the business world. Code enforcement, business development, it's gotta start from scratch and if I am elected your councilperson, it will start from scratch. And the business owners, like in the Stater Brothers Plaza that I talked to two years ago, they saw me talking to one guy, then like four or five of them come over and go, "Are you running for city council? We need this and we need that." And guess what? They're all gone two years later. They couldn't make it, okay? Things have gotta change dramatically. Now, I know Gabe, he's, he's one of the code enforcement guys and why, why am I friends with Gabe? Because let me give you an example how I help the city of Montclair. When there's a, there's a code enforcement or destroyed house or drug house or whatever the issue is, I'll get a group of real estate investors, we'll go in, we'll purchase that property, we'll rehabilitate that property and we'll, and we'll make it a nice family home. And I'll give you an example, it was a house, it was destroyed, broken windows, garage doors half tilted, it was, the pool was caved in, I went inside and that property was sold for $145,000 and the tax base was lower than that. We rehabilitated that property and we sold it for $329,000. And yes, the investor made money on that, but guess what? It's a beautiful home now and guess what the new taxes are on that house? Like over $3,500 a year. So, those are the type of things that I'm gonna do as your elected official for the city of Montclair. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez.
I'm a little biased, I love Montclair. I think, I don't know if improve would be an accurate answer. I would say working well with, for example, the, working well with others. The code enforcement right now is backing off of the, how brown can your lawn be because, face it, we're in a drought and it's acts like that. They're, they're not ticketing, in fact, what they're doing is they're giving residents the opportunity to get a little ticket to go to Green Army and pick up some mulch for their yard as opposed to giving them a ticket. And that's one of the little programs that's been recently designed. Also, for the business development side of it, I have two words, Melina and Darlene, Chamber of Commerce. I've said this a million times, I constantly am saying this. The businesses you see succeed here in Montclair have one thing in common, they're members of the chamber. They just are and it's working together, working with each other, little programs like helping one another, distributing flyers to 160 students at Our Lady of Lourdes because they're mostly Montclair residents and they have to go out, they have to shop, eat and they know what's out there. And those, most of those flyers are coming from the Chamber of Commerce, although the program's open to anyone. open to anyone. That's my answer. I love Montclair.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez?
Yeah, I always feel we could always do better with respect to code enforcement. It's the actions of code enforcement, not changing the word and it becoming an issue of semantics. Regarding business development, I'm in favor of eliminating complete business licensing fees for new businesses into Montclair for one year, as an incentive for them to come here. Let other cities match that. For every time the city can try to beat that, I feel we should come up with something else to bring them here, but I will, in favor of suspending their licensing fees for one year if they're new to Montclair. You know, code enforcement is, and it's actually, the ordinance is not code enforcement. The ordinance is regarding business advertising is very strict. You have a restaurant on Central Avenue that all of us go to, because we used to all put our political signs in her business, but she cannot advertise seasonal menu items because she's restricted for three weeks or four weeks to put a banner, and then she has to take it down and wait six months. That's stupid. You've got Chevron on Central and San Bernardino. Vons program allows you to get 10 cents off per gallon if you use your rewards at Chevron. The Montclair Chevron, because of lack of advertising with temporary banners, was the lowest used by Vons members in the region. That's gotta change. What's the harm of having temporary banners up for six months? I could care less. Let's bring them into Montclair, let the businesses do what they wish to advertise and bring in revenue and provide jobs. It's not government's business to get involved in their lives to that extent.
And the green lawn ordinance needs to go.
Thank you. And Ms. Garcia?
Okay, what can be done for code enforcement? A lot, I'm sorry, a lot of things can be done, and again, I 100% agree with Ben Lopez. That has been the grievance of our business owners. They feel like they're driven out, they're driven away from the city. As parents, I'm sure you guys all are parents, there needs to be a balance between discipline and encouragement, and our business owners feel that it's just discipline, discipline, the spanking on the hands, you guys are, the city's all big on code enforcement, that's all the grievances they say, and that's all I've been hearing. And I have not been affected by signage, because I don't need the signage for my business, but a lot of the people here, they need the signs, they need to advertise. If we allow them, if we make the changes, which I agree with Ben Lopez, for six months, they're gonna pay, they're gonna pay to have these banners. We're gonna make money for these banners, for the service, six months. Let them advertise, let them raise their sales revenue, let them pay more taxes to the city, and it's gonna be a win-win for everyone, because that's the problem that we have. Code enforcement needs to back off, we need to focus on other ways of making our money instead of just going after code enforcement. That's all I hear about, it's all about code enforcement. We need to back off, we need to work with our business owners, we need to support them or they're gonna leave, and they are leaving. They are leaving our city. And it's a beautiful city, it's a great city, we have so much to offer, we have a lot coming up with the Metro Gold Line extension with the north Montclair area. We need to back off with code enforcement, let's balance it off. I'm not saying to do away with it, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying, let's not focus just on the discipline, let's encourage our business owners, let's make them feel wanted. I guarantee that if we work with them and if we allow them to put the banners on a temporary basis, everyone will benefit from it.
Thank you. All right, going to Mr. Brunsky now. If you were elected, what would be your first priority for the city of Montclair?
My first priority for the city of Montclair would be to do something right across the street from the Costco Business Center. Already, the city's lost about $1.6 million in sales tax revenue, because I had a client that wanted to move his business in there, that would have generated about $1.6 million so far, but it's not there. There's dirt there. And what I got from, well, we can't have that type of business coming into our city. Well, I've been here since 1998, and I've been looking at dirt since 1998. So would the residents rather look at dirt, or would they rather see $1.6 million come into the city so that we can have more police officers on the street, so we can have more services, so we can have less taxes? It's real simple, okay? And, you know, I mean, that's my first priority, but obviously, the major priority is the Montclair Plaza, and I'm just gonna keep going down the list. We need to have better relations with our fire and police. Give you an example, after the last election, did you know that three police officers were suspended with pay for a long period of time? And guess what? They're sitting at home collecting a paycheck. And then while they're not working, guess what? The other officers have to work overtime. How much you think that cost the city of Montclair? Hundreds of thousands of dollars, okay? We're not gonna have any more games with the police and the fire anymore, we're gonna have relations. They are our employees, we need to work with them, not against them, okay? So your tax dollars got spent for people to sit at home and not work, and the other employees got overtime for that. That's a huge waste of money. Money wasting is over in Montclair if I'm elected your city councilperson.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez?
My first goal would be to work diligently with the five-year strategic plan, in order for the other goals that I would like to see happen. Retention of our officers, public safety officers is huge. They're leaving to other cities that are paying them more, and I can't blame them. They haven't had raises in quite some time. I would like to be able to develop our economy so that we are in a position to give those raises. And so with the strategic plan and building that bridge to a Montclair future, it provides the revenue to do so. That's my answer.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez?
My number one priority is gonna be public safety. I always feel that the first and only legitimate object of government is to provide safety for its citizens, and I would say that far too long, our police and fire, men and women have not been given the fair deal that they deserve. I'm in favor of all employees in the city of Montclair, whether you work in this building here, or the fire station, or the police station. And I know some are shaking their head, but I am in favor of all employees, I very much am. And, you know, our policemen and fire, actually, our firemen, it's been eight years since they've had a raise, not even a cost of living adjustment. The city council members get $975 in insurance benefits payable to them, and firemen get, if I'm not mistaken, 850. As a councilman, I'll voluntarily reverse that, refund the other portion to the city, and take what the firemen are currently getting and give them my portion. It's all about setting an example. Our fire and police are the face of government. They're the face of government. When people call for services, nine times out of 10, they need a policeman at their door, they have an emergency in their home, they need a medic, they need a fireman. We should reward them, that's the number one priority. I won't do it with breaking the bank, however, that's one thing I'll guarantee you. I won't do it without breaking the bank. And as long as we come to the table and they come to the table, and instead of us sitting on one side and them on the other, let's set it a round table, let's work together. And I think far too long, our police and fire, we're losing them. We don't have a high level of retention, they're going to other departments that offer them far more. Montclair joined with Upland, but yet our Montclair firefighters still get paid 30% less than Upland get paid today. Let's make Montclair, let's reward our officers that are putting their necks on the line for us.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia?
My first priority is gonna be education. Education is dear to me on a personal level and also on a business level. On a personal level, I struggled to get my education. I was working full-time, raising my family, going to school, and I broke through glass ceilings, and I believe in education, education pays dividends. I'm gonna focus on education, I'm gonna be working with our school board members, and here is our elected official, Josie Estrada, here representing us, I'm gonna work with Josie Estrada and with Lucy Aguilar Lord Willing, if elected, to the Ontario Montclair School District. My focal point with education is going to be to continue to be a business leader, to continue to speak to the children, the sixth grade classrooms, and plant the seed of education, because there's no other way. With that, I'm gonna use my Spanish to be able to reach out to the parents, because they do not, the demographics, where it's, I believe it's 68% Latino, the families, the parents cannot help the children as much as they want it to, and not because they don't want to. They don't know how to, they don't have the means, and they don't understand, there's a language barrier. My focal point is gonna be education, I'm gonna focus on the education, because we're investing in our future workforce. I wanna focus on the parents with job training, vocational training, to get them higher-paying jobs so that they can also contribute to our local economy.
Thank you. Mr. Rue?
Yes, my priority will be to continue economic development in this city. We will be meeting with the developers and those who've invested in this community, Aero Station, the CIM Group, Canyon Johnson Partners, and others, to see what can we do? How can we get more of this in the city? We've had these developers come here in the last two years. This has been positive for Montclair, and we'll continue to meet with them, because without economic development, we can't have anything else. We can't have a good, better salaries for police or fire, we cannot have a better education program if we don't have economic development, which is bringing in the tax base that we need. In education, we're doing a wonderful job in this city. How many cities do you know of that has an ESL program in the after-school program at our apartment sites and at our community centers? How many people have the Por la Vida program, where we have our concierge, which go out to the community, in the community, and work with their peers on everything from nutrition to workplace skills? We have that here in this city, but without economic development bringing in the taxes, we can't do anything. So we'll continue to meet with the folks who are going to make the difference in this town, those who have already invested here, and we know who they are, and we are meeting with them, and they're making major investments in this town.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Martinez, what attributes do you possess that would make you a better council representative than the other candidates?
Well, I'm certified in mediation, number one. Also, I have a very, very good working relationship with the current council. Excuse me. Ms. Raff, she is actually my mentor, and she's only the second female city councilwoman ever elected in the city. And I think my relationship that I have with all of the different organizations in the city provide for an attribute that's priceless. It's just the experience, the knowledge, the ability, and the actions that I've shown, my leadership, those are the attributes that will make me the best candidate. I'm also the first city council candidate in history of Montclair to be unanimously endorsed by the city council. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez?
You know, I've known all the council members in one capacity or another for the past 24 years collectively, and I've served and worked with them on a variety of issues over the years. Served on Paul's campaign in the 90s, Carolyn with Bill, with John, we've warded with other issues, but John and I have had a coming to Jesus, so to speak. We've all worked together. I've worked with all of them, and I will continue to do that. Now, I'm a lifetime Montclair resident, small businessman of my own, I have my own mobile notary public business, I have done legislative advocating work in the halls of Sacramento, I've actually had bills signed into laws by governors. I will utilize those skills and those connections to help foster avenues by which we can bring in funds from elected officials, business community, investors, you name it. But instead of talking about myself, I will give credit to the other four. I think they all have something distinct and different, as do I, that they can all bring to the table. So I would just ask that you look at all of us based on our merits, give us a fair shake, and I would hopefully, at least when it comes to one of the two votes, I'd be one of those that you consider for city council, and give me the honor of serving you for four years.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia?
Okay. I am a leader, I am a born leader. I am a very goal-minded woman, I set my eye on the target and I go after it. I'm a hard worker, I'm a loyal woman, I'm humble, I'm honest, I'm strong, so I have a backbone. I am a, I've been managing commercial real estate, I've been dealing with a lot of business owners, there's a lot of interaction, I have a business degree, I know the business side, the business sector, but most importantly, I'm going back to representing the demographics of Montclair. I am bilingual, I am able to communicate with our constituents. Again, that's an attribute that is gonna be a great attribute for the whole city, and I have the ability to work independently or in a work setting. I'm a team player, but I can also take charge on my own, because that's my nature. I'm compassionate, and I am fair, I am just. I believe that I'm the best candidate for the city council seat, because the demographics are, they need us. We need to represent them, we need to represent, we have to understand their levels of education, they're not too high. Again, I've been there, I've done that. I am the first generation Mexican-American, first to graduate from college. I know, when they tell me, you don't know what it's like, I do know what it's like. I don't make excuses, I make it happen.
Thank you. Mr. Rue?
As far as attributes I bring to this council, I can look at my background. I have it in part of my closing statement, but I grew up very poor in this town. My mother had five children alone. I know what it's like to struggle, I know what it's like to see your mother work two to three jobs just to support her family. It's taught me about hard work, but the attributes I bring, I've spent an entire life in public policy in some way or another, not in the think tank sense, but in the real-world sense. I've worked with legislators, both in Sacramento, Washington DC, at the county level, at the city level, to get things done. I understand what it takes to have that back and forth, that compromise you need in order to make sure that everybody is represented, that everybody has a say, that it becomes a win-win for everybody. I think my attributes are also the fact that, growing up in this city, I've seen the changes for the positive, I've seen things that maybe I don't like, but we know we can change for the future. I have the attributes that I've been a team player, I can work with anybody, we can come together and reason, we can work together, and not only that, I'm willing to put aside my personal agendas for the benefit of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brunsky?
Tough question, but a good question. Obviously, you're running for election, and you're trying to win your vote out there versus the other council members trying to win an election. But I'm self-employed. I can't rely on anybody else to pay my benefits, to send me a check every week, or to give me vacation pay. That's not how I roll in life. I work hard for everything I've accumulated in my life, so I would expect the same thing at the city council level. For instance, the 2014-2015 budget, if you want to go to sleep at night, is 403 pages, and I've read it. You know what the cost of city to have the city council annually? Two, let's just say, let's make it $300,000, but it gets better. The salaries are only $47,000, which I'm not gonna take. The benefits, $76,000, which I'm not gonna take. Supplies, you ready? I say, let's get rid of it. This is ridiculous. If we want to be givers to our community, why don't we just donate the $300,000 back into the budget? So I can get my street paved. Recently, they just paved up in the north part of my neighborhood, up by MacArthur Park. They paved all these streets sideways, this way, but they didn't pave the last two streets where me and Mr. Rue live. And I called the city, I go, what are you doing? You got all these trucks up here, you're doing all this work? Why don't you pave the last two streets? And then you've completed the square. They said, we don't have enough money. I go, well, who's running this operation? Finish it off. Then you're gonna have to bring all these trucks all the way back up to North Montclair just to finish two streets off. What common sense does this make? None, okay? I have common sense, and that's why you need to elect me to get on this council. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, we have some candidate-specific questions now. Be coming back down to this end of the table. Number one again. All righty, Mr. Lopez, in your candidate's statement, you support a wide array of community programs, the Gold Line, improvements to Montclair Plaza and police and fire services. You also oppose increased taxes. How would you propose to maintain or increase How would you propose to maintain or increase funding for these programs, given revenue constraints?
Like every family in Montclair, we all have to live within our means. The average family in town, middle-income family, making about $30,000 to $40,000 a year, most of the folks in our town are no longer homeowners, they're renters. They don't just have the luxury of running up a credit card to the extent that government does. So I mean to be prudent with the money we have. I'm not saying that the current council has run carte blanche and run us into the hole and the ditch. Not saying they have. What I'm saying is, we've got to maintain the current level of services to maintain our senior program, the health, the immunization, our youth sports, our youth programs, lighting at the fields that they play on, police and fire, maintain those current levels. And then, if we have to make some certain cuts, we're going to have to. But we've got to prioritize. I'm not in favor of raising taxes at all. We're paying far too much, folks. We really are. Families are stretched, and it's not the duty of government to keep coming to you and ask for more money, more money, more money. We need to be diligent with what we have, and it comes time to make cuts, just like every other family in Montclair has to. The city should lead by example and do the same. That's my pledge to you.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia?
You have made statements indicating that all city investment has been focused on North Montclair and South Montclair has been ignored. Is this accurate? If yes, how do you account for the multitude of projects conducted in South Montclair, such as the improvements of Mission Boulevard, widening of Ramona, and Monte Vista avenues, and the Ramona Avenue grade separation? And no such public projects have occurred in North Montclair?
I have never made that statement, first of all. But I will answer the question to the best of my abilities. I am in favor for the investment on the North Montclair project because that's where our stream of income is going to come. I think the south side, there has been improvements. That's why I don't know where that question came from. I know that right now, we have, we do have to focus on the north side because that's what the development is at, and that's what's going to give us a stream of income. The south side, we cannot forget, of course, and we haven't, because there has been projects, and that's why, again, I go back to that statement. But I'm in favor for the north side because that's where, again, I go back to that, the development is taking us, and that's where the stream of income's going to come.
Thank you. All righty, and Mr. Rue? In general, other candidates have mentioned that the current city council lacks adequate support for business and human services programs and limits the public improvement projects to certain neighborhoods. As an incumbent, how do you respond to these criticisms?
As far as our human services and community services programs, these have won awards. They're available to everybody. We've done a tremendous amount of outreach in this community to get people involved with those programs. We have a youth center that's busy, a senior center that's busy. We have a recreation program that's busy. Tell me another city that has online to college, which ensures a free education for two years at Chaffey College. Show me another community that has our Por la Vida program. Show me another community that has our community collaborative program. We're inclusive of everybody in this community. We've done public improvements throughout this city, not just in one specific area. We've heard it tonight. We have a lot of things going on in the south end of town. We've had the Mission Boulevard specific plan to improve and make Mission Boulevard into a very nice area. Let's look at it. Compare it to other cities throughout the area. Our Mission Boulevard looks good. We've done a lot to work on areas in the city in the north as well and throughout the community. We're paving streets. We're paving, oh, we're paving the streets. We're finding areas where we can even put in sidewalks where they're warranted. We have never ignored anybody in this city, and we continue to move forward with these. And again, show me another community that has E S L in their apartment communities and in their community centers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brunsky? Let's see, forgive me, I'm trying to disseminate handwriting here, so. You stated in your statement, in your statement, that you take no donations. Is it not true that you received large donations from the fire and police unions?
I wonder who wrote that question because everything that's done politically has to be done in a form, okay? And if you just go over to City Hall, and you'll take a look, and you'll see how many contributions I've received this year, it's zero. And I'm telling the truth, but if you want to verify, walk on over and check. And it's funny you should bring that up because, you know, last election got kind of dirty, and there was a lot of smearing going on, and I thought, "Gosh, I'm kind of a nice guy. Why do I deserve all this?" And so I took a look at the Montclair Taxpayers Association. And I'm wondering, who is that? And it says Tricia Vincent on it, and it's dated 10/24/2012. And I'm thinking, "Who's Tricia Vincent?" The only thing I could gather, is I looked at the address, she's sitting right next to me. But her real name is Tricia Martinez. So it's kind of funny how, and it's a document, it's legal, it's signed, I've left pamphlets over there for you to take a look at. Now you know why the current city council is endorsing her. Because these are the people, your city council members, that smeared me in the last campaign, right here, through this taxpayers' association, okay? What really concerns me is it says, "I certify under penalty of perjury, under the laws of the state of California, that the foregoing is true and correct." Well, if it's true and correct, why don't you just say Tricia Martinez? That's your real name. It wasn't Tricia Vincent at this time, because I have another document here dated May 12, 2012, and here she is with a picture of her, and it says Tricia Martinez. But when it comes election time and smearing, all of a sudden, she turns into Tricia Vincent. Isn't that amazing, okay? So I didn't like to have my name smeared all over town, and I'm sure you didn't like getting all those letters to your mailboxes and stuff. But guess what? I didn't spend a dime of my own money sending those documents out last election, and you won't get any this election either, because I'm not going to send out all those things, okay? I'm not getting any money in this election and giving it all back.
All righty, Ms. Martinez? Other candidates believe that you have been handpicked to run for city council. Do you feel this is an accurate statement? If yes, should it matter to the electorate voters of Montclair?
The answer is no. I have not been handpicked. I did so, chose to run on my own will. It's my honor, it's a privilege to serve this community that I love so much. I'm dedicated, and I've always been dedicated, not just now, pardon me. And I think it is important to the voters to know that the council supports me and has endorsed me because of my actions, not because of any favors, anything I'm going to promise, or I can do for them. They're doing for themselves very well.
Thank you. All righty, I believe we only have about 15 minutes left, which will give us time for closing remarks. And we'll start with you, Ms. Martinez. Give us one second here, we'll get the clock. We're good? So you've got three minutes for your closing remarks each. Go ahead.
Again, I want to thank you all for being here. And I'm running for city council because I love Montclair. I'm not here to shake it up. I don't want change, you know, except if you want to throw in a couple of dimes here and there, that's fine. But I think Montclair is, no, I know Montclair is a model city. We are the top financial city in all 24 cities in the county. We have state-of-the-art police department, youth center, Por la Vida programs that no other city can top. We get calls from all over the place wanting to know about our senior center. We have, most of our seniors that come have lunch, they don't live here. It's just because we have an awesome program. It's a, we have the best, we have the most, the fastest-growing Chamber of Commerce. I'm not here for one of the two seats. I want to make that perfectly clear. I'm sorry, I'm here only for one of the two seats, the open seat. I'm not here to take Bill out of his seat, Mr. Rue. He is, he's excellent for our city. He's who we need here in the city. And I'm asking that you vote for me, support me, to fill Leonard Politt's open seat. And once again, I want to thank you for coming here, and please, when you make your decision, make it based on who you know has been here, is dedicated, qualified, educated, and motivated to continue building that bridge to Montclair.
Thank you. Mr. Brunsky?
Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight. I think after what I've heard tonight, you've heard three sensible, non-politicians speak here tonight. They're citizens just like you. They care about our city. They care about our tax dollars, and I'm one of those. You know, reading that 403-page boondoggle, you know, here's another example. Our city attorney, $29,000 a year. Now, that's fair. But how about $313,000 in supplies? That's mind-boggling. How many supplies do you need? Our citizens in Montclair, 75% of our citizens in Montclair make $75,000 or less. But yet, in our city, we have 60 to 70 employees that make $75,000 or more. You see that problem here? There's way too much money with our city employees versus the community that they represent. It's a major problem. And I haven't even gotten into the overtime yet. In our budget, we have like $470,000 allocated for police overtime. You wonder why there's so much turnover in our city? Because we don't pay them. Why don't we take some of the overtime money, pay them a little bit more in the salary so they stay, so we don't have this turnover? Think about how much it costs for a turnover. We have had 15, 20 new police officers in the last two years. You know how much it costs a city to retrain these guys? Put two guys in a car instead of one? Talk about like $100,000 a police officer. That's like $1.5 million to $2 million that we've just burned through because we're a stable police force. That all ends when you elect me, okay? There's going to be better relations with our police and fire. There's not going to be all this turnover. The Montclair Plaza is going to thrive, okay? And everybody wants to talk about Mission Boulevard, but nobody wants to talk about where did that money come from? It came from redevelopment. You think the city just woke up one day and said, "Hey, we're going to go down and clean up Mission Boulevard"? It was redevelopment money, okay? But guess what they forgot to take out when they were building brand-new roads and nice inlets? The déjà vu nude theater. And it still stands there, and it's still pink. It's incredible, okay? That will all change when I'm elected your city councilperson, okay? I've sat here as a resident, my street's never been paved. They try to fill it in with stuff. It's cracked, it's breaking. I saw all my residents south of me get all nice paved streets, and I was told, "Oh, don't, we didn't have enough money." The entire city's going to get taken care of when I'm elected your Montclair councilman. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Rue?
Thank you for being here this evening. Thank you for enduring all of this. We appreciate it. I'm a lifetime resident of this community, a product of this community, and by this community. My mother reared five children alone. I know what it's like to struggle, dream, and achieve success. I am the first in my family to graduate from high school, right here at Montclair High School. I'm the first in my family to graduate from college, the University of La Verne. To me, that's proof that a strong family environment, good values, and lots of hard work can still pay off. I chose to enter public service, as I was taught from an early age, that public service is the rent you pay for the space you take up on earth. It's the way to give back. Right now, California, and indeed all of our communities, are just coming out of the worst economic times they've had in 70 years. There's a lot of challenges. And to confront those challenges, we don't need on-the-job training, or getting up to speed on the learning curve, or getting to know the issues. We need experience to continue to push us forward. I have that experience, experience earned by a lifetime of service to this community. I'm supported by Democrats, and Republicans, and Independents, Liberals, and Conservatives, and Moderates. I'm supported by members of the law enforcement community, nurses, teachers, business labor, as well as a host of elected officials. I have the established relationships in Washington, D.C., and Sacramento to help get the job done. But most importantly, I'm supported by the families which make up our community. They realize that to fulfill our destiny, we're not to be divided or subdivided into groups along lines of race, creed, or nationality, but that we are one community, one people, all deserving of respect, dignity, and equality. It's that simple. It's that profound. They, along with me, know that our best days are not behind us, but reach out before us. I'm asking you on November 4th to vote for someone who will continue to knight this community, who will work for the good of everyone who calls Montclair home, and most importantly, vote for somebody who has been tried and tested, someone with experience. I ask you to vote for me on November 4th. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia?
Thank you very much for having me here and for listening to my ideas and my vision for Montclair. I am a team player, as I indicated before. I am here to build unity. I want to focus on the team, building the team unity for, with our constituents. I want to focus on, I'm going to work hard to create the revenue we need so that we can restore the lost city jobs, so that we can take care of our residents better. I want to focus on strengthening our education and business sector so that we can attract new businesses and new residents. With the education going up, we're going to attract more residents. That's the first thing, as a Realtor, that we look at, that the families look at when they're going to move into a city. That's what we looked at. My husband and I, when we moved to Montclair, Montclair was, it is still, but we've had the challenges. Again, it's the challenges that we had with the redevelopment that now we need to find other ways. I will collaborate. I will work hand-in-hand with the city officials, with educators, parents, community leaders, business owners, for sponsorship and mentoring opportunities for our youth. I will work hard to create the support groups that we need to build a stronger Montclair. There's a lot of needs, there's a lot of needs for, there's a lot of single moms out there. I am working with different associations to help empower women through education. We cannot forget about our single moms. I was raised by a single mom, and I saw the struggles, and here in Montclair, we have a lot of those same struggles because, if we look at the demographics, we're seeing again that the pay is not enough. So I will focus on strengthening the business sector, again, by collaborating with community leaders, with maybe job placement, vocational training with schools. My focal point is to raise our people up so that they can become more empowered, stronger, and so that they can contribute to our local economy. And then I believe that our problems will be solved at that point because the morale will be up, and with that going up, it's a win-win for everyone. Thank you for everything, and I'm looking forward to serving you and the city council. And I'm looking forward to working together with you. Trabajando juntos para un mejor Montclair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez?
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules and your evening away from family to come here tonight. And those of you watching at home, I appreciate your time. You know, Montclair's brighter days are ahead of us. I've always felt that we can always build on the success that we've made and work on the areas where we are weak. We should never be satisfied with success, but always aim for more, and that's what Montclair can do. You know, it's printed on our money, the saying, "Out of many, one." And it also says in scripture that if one can put a thousand to flight, two can put 10,000. There's power in numbers with the united community. And I hope to be one of those members of the city council to help foster that success. You know, I too am Latin and of Mexican descent with the surname. You've probably seen my green signs. But I'm not here to solely represent the Latin community. I'm here to represent every member of the Montclair community, young and old, regardless of color, creed, disability. I'm your guy as a member of the city council. I won't cut beyond the current level of funding for programs. You got my word. We'll work out other details as the economy or things are thrown our way. I'm not here for personal benefit. I pledge that I will serve one term, two terms, but I will not, just in two years, run for another office, as is rumored by some members running for office today that they may do so. I pledge to Paul, John, Carolyn, Bill if you're reelected, or if me and another of the others up here are elected right after the election, keeping with my word of being a team player, and being open and fair, and vowing your input. Lunches on me. We'll do individual lunches. I'm not here to cause waves. I'm here to work with everybody. I'm here to work with you to make sure our residents are fairly treated, taken care of, and the success is made. I'm pro-business. I'm pro-resident. I'm pro-business, I'm pro-resident, I'm pro-public safety for sure. Our greatest asset is our residents, young and old, and our employees, both in this building and at the stations. Voters of Montclair have been generous to our family, and I ask for that same level of support. You've trusted our family when it comes to water issues, police trusts us when it comes to city issues. You've been very gracious to us, even in city services, that I've taken advantage of as a teen. You know, most people remember me as a boy. I know Ginger Eaton's laughing because she probably still remembers me with long hair, but boy, have times changed. I haven't left this town, I don't intend to leave at all. My heart is in this, folks, I ask for your fair consideration. I'm always open and available. In fact, you can call me anytime, except after midnight. I'm making my number available to anyone, friend or foe, whether you disagree with me or agree with me. I'm here to serve you, and if elected, I'll continue with that word and that promise and commitment. God bless you all.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank all of the candidates here this evening. Thank you for participating. Thank you for putting yourself out there, and thank you for caring about the city of Montclair. Good luck to you all. I'd like to thank everybody in the audience for your participation and all the great questions. I'd like to remind everybody to get out and vote. Tuesday, November 4th, it's very important. Drag your friends. Thank you very mu, very much, and with that, have a great evening.